We're good, we're ready Denise? Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting of November 19th, 2020. I would like to remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. And for those who are attending virtually, please mute your microphones while not speaking. At this time, I would like to ask you all to please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Ms. Girardi?
Here.
Michael Cox?
Here.
Peter Hansel?
Here.
Zoe Sotia? Christopher Poole?
Here.
Chris Williams?
Here.
Chairman Calvert?
Alright, the Planning Commission is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet twice a month. The Planning Commission serves as the local planning agency. The Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it is important that you attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioners meeting. Looks like we have one set of meeting minutes to approve. I believe.
That's correct.
Motion?
I'm so moved to approve the minutes.
I'll second, Chris Poole.
It's Peter Hansel made the motion and Chris Poole second. No further discussion, I guess we'll roll call vote.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
Zoe Sotia? Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
Jamie Girardi?
Aye. Now, we will move to the public comment portion of the agenda on non-agenda items. First, we will take public comment for items not on the agenda from the public comment kiosk and from WebEx participants who have pre-registered and are currently on cue. After, we will read into the public records documents, PowerPoints, or videos that have been identified by members of the public to be read out loud or played at the meeting for items not on the agenda, not to exceed three minutes for each. Denise, do we have anyone pre-registered who sent email or who has sent emails?
We have no one pre-registered or anyone who has sent emails or anyone at the public comment kiosk to speak on items that are not on today's agenda.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, now we will move on to the public hearing procedures. Participants attending through the public comment kiosk and WebEx participants, including the applicants who have pre-registered for the Hybrid Virtual Planning Commission Meeting, will be notified by county staff when they will be permitted to speak. Applicants will be limited to five minutes and other participants will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is approved at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Participants attending through the public comment kiosk and WebEx participants must clearly announce the following items before speaking, and at that time, they will be sworn by the clerk. They must announce their name, address, agenda item number, or agenda item title. Then, the three or five-minute timer will start. After public comment kiosk and WebEx participants, we will read into the public record comments, documents, PowerPoints, or videos that have been identified by members of the public to be read out loud at the meeting, limited to five minutes for applicants and three minutes for other participants. Today, we have two public hearing items, I believe, on the consent agenda. These items will be approved by a roll call vote at the end unless the item is pulled from consent. Once a motion is made on the consent agenda, the Planning Commission member who makes the motion will state his name, the Planning Commission member who seconds the motion will state his name, and the clerk will call the roll. Denise, do you want to do the consent?
Sure, we can start. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item PC1 is actually going to be pulled from the consent agenda because we did receive an email of objection, which I would like for you to please receive and file. The applicant did not ask that it be read into record, but this was received after your agenda packet was put together, so it's on your desks if you would please move to receive and file.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Roll call vote.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
Jamie Girardi?
Aye.
Okay, so I will read the item title into record. It's PDD 210048. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2007 Salem, for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and Sheet 20, changing from RES 3 residential three dwelling units per gross acre to RES 6 residential six dwelling units per gross acre on approximately 77.21 acres of real property located on the south side of Tower Road south of Bexley Village Drive. Today, we ask that you find this consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, and I think that item's getting pulled. Do we ask for public comment now or wait?
Yeah, we can ask for public comment. I believe all these items will have presentations, so you'll have a presentation on each and every one of these items.
Okay.
So, is the applicant virtually in attendance?
The applicant is virtually in attendance.
Denise, did we get proof of publication on all these items? No, we didn't.
Thank you, that's a good point.
Good point. Madam Clerk, do we have proof?
Yes, the items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on October 28, 2020, November 4, 2020, or by affidavit of certified mailouts and site postings.
We also need to swear in any witnesses, please. So, if you could have the clerks swear everybody in.
So, anybody speaking, if you would raise your right hand and do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth to help you God?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to make any comments, Barbara, on the item?
Sure, hi, this is Barbara Willhite, 6327 Brand Boulevard, Newport, Florida, 34652 for the applicant. We do have staff recommendation of approval. We received an email yesterday from a neighboring property somewhere in the vicinity, I guess, that we noticed. I look at that email, that the person that corresponded with us was going to the multifamily. When we first noticed this complaint amendment, we just noticed the complaint amendment from RES 3 to RES 6, and we got a lot of calls concerned about multifamily development. First of all, RES 6 isn't enough density for multifamily apartments, but regardless, we sent out a new notice and also explained what our pending MPUD is for, which your staff report has in there what the pending MPUD is. But we went out and sent a new notice out and explained the pending MPUD, which is for no more than 325 dwelling units, single-family detached and/or townhomes, all single-family product, and we made sure we were clear that no multifamily. So, based upon that, and those are some specific questions, I think we've addressed the concern of the person in that email. He was writing concerned about multifamily. We're happy to present or answer your questions or however you want to handle it, but there's no multifamily proposed. You will see the MPUD later. The way staff handles these now is you don't see them together, which causes me concern, but I haven't been able to convince staff to do it differently like we used to. We used to bring these two together. And so, in any event, we will bring the MPUD back and you'll have the opportunity to go through that and we'll re-notice the MPUD. And so, if the public has any questions about the zoning, they could participate at that time.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. I mean Denise, does this getting pulled from consent, so do we take public comment now or do we wait?
Jamie, you can take public comment now.
Okay, do we have anyone else who is pre-registered to speak or at the public comment kiosk?
There's no one pre-registered to speak at the public comment kiosk, nor is there anyone on WebEx.
Chair is speaking, we can't hear him.
Okay. Do we have anyone else who is pre-registered to speak or at the public comment kiosk to speak? And I think Denise answered no. Okay?
That's correct, Chairman.
And I think we already received and filed the email, so does that have to be read or not?
It was not requested that the item be read into the record.
Okay, so are we moving on to the next consent item agenda or are we?
Well, actually, this one was pulled from consent, so you can vote from this item, and all these items are going to have a presentation, so they're really not consent items.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and handle, we're going to handle the regular item now. Okay, is there any questions from up here?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Cox, I'll move for approval.
I'll second, Peter Hansel.
I just have a question. I know there's some radio towers out there now, are they right? Is that correct?
Yes, correct. AM broadcast station towers out there, yes.
I'm just curious, are they not needed anymore? Are they being moved somewhere or do they have another location? Or, I'm just curious.
The AM radio towers are not on this parcel. Is that accurate, Barbara?
I think they are on this parcel, and I don't remember what the client said. I know they're moving forward to remove those. I don't remember if they're going to be replaced or what the story was with them, but they will be removed.
But, so they're going away?
They are going away, yes.
Okay. Thank you, like I said, I was just curious.
Okay, so there's a motion by Peter and a second by Mike Cox. Is there any other comment? Roll call vote.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Girardi?
Aye.
Alright, the following item is PDD 2000A1. It's for the Crate Unified Sign Plan. Nation of Gold Properties LP and Mission Huntsville LSC Grove at Wesley Chapel MPUD in order to establish the Crate Unified Sign Plan. The parcel is located in central Pasco County, east of Oakley Boulevard and west by 75, approximately 650 feet north of Wesley Chapel Boulevard. This is basically showing you within the Grove at Wesley Chapel where the Unified Sign Plan will take place. This is the exhibit of the area covering the Unified Sign Plan. These are some of the designs from the Unified Sign Plan. It just shows, it's going to be a container park, so it shows the container designs, the urban nature of the feel and the look of all the signs within the Unified Sign Plan. So again, this is proposed establishment of the Crate Unified Sign Plan, which contains a portion of the Grove at Wesley Chapel MPUD. According to the Land Development Code, the establishments of Unified Sign Plan allows applicants to create attractive signage that are uniform, cohesive, designed in color, texture, materials, architectural features, just in order to place the development. It's an open air, an urban industrial container park with retail shops, restaurants, seating areas, and live entertainment. And that sign design is cohesive with the architectural designs intended described in Unified Sign Plan and the signage package outlined in the Unified Sign Plan. The container signs are primary target identity signs, the light signs are secondary identity signs, and the recreational signs, all are consistent with an urban industrial theme, uniform, and cohesive design made from color, texture, materials, and architectural features. They're creatively designed within urban style, urban design style, which includes industrial materials, which is a tool that are well used to plates, vinyl, and distinctive color palettes that show the use of the crate container park. So, we're recommending approval of the agreement and the accompanying Unified Sign Plan and on the side of your sitting as the local planning agency.
Okay, is the applicant virtually in attendance?
The applicant is virtually in attendance.
Do they wish to speak or?
Hi, this is Barbara Willhite again. We are proud of the Unified Sign Plan and staff worked hard with us on it. Most of our signs all comply without the need for Unified Sign Plan, but we thought in collaborative work with the county that we come up with common themes and textures and the like, so that the plan for this, for our new crate container park, would have a great sign plan, so we appreciate all the collaborative work that staff did to get us to this point.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Do we have anyone else who is pre-registered to speak or at the public comment kiosk?
No one pre-registered to speak, no one at the public comment kiosk, and no one has sent any emails or letters or any videos to show.
Okay, is there any questions or comments from up here?
Just a quick comment, I appreciate the applicant's efforts on this. It's really reviewing the plan, it's really impressive, so I appreciate that.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second, Chris Poole.
Alright, no further comment, roll call vote.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
I want to vote on this matter, thank you.
And Chairman Girardi?
Aye. Okay, and I think that concludes the consent portion of the agenda. We'll now move on to the regular items portion of the agenda.
Thank you. It's my body magnetism. I have actually two agenda items today. One is a comprehensive plan amendment, and the second is its associated companion piece for the Land Development Code to implement this comprehensive plan amendment. I'll read the ordinance itself, proposed ordinance, an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use element, Chapter 2, Goal 6, including text and figure revisions to the Core Reserve, the village separator provisions, existing development approvals, and figures PH 5, PH 6, PH 7, and PH 8 revisions to village I borders. I don't have a clicker here. Okay, thank you Denise, super thanks. Next. So today, what we're, in basic, what we're talking about here is, we're in Phase 2 of the update for the Villages of Pasadena Hills update study. The first phase was covered and agreed, approved on May 5. This is now the second phase. There were some underlying items that had needed more time to walk through, and that's basically what we're going to talk to mostly about today, it's the Core Reserve issue. So, what we have is the flu, includes the text revisions to the Core Reserve, we'll discuss in more detail. The village separator provisions are all fine, we've all agreed to that, and revisions to village I borders as well. But we're going to cover those things, but we'll just know that the only item that really is left to really decide, and this is where we need your help, when you'll see the recommendation we put together, we're going to need your input, discussion, and giving direction as to what recommendation you would like to make before the BCC. Next. Here you see 22,000 acres of the Villages of Pasadena Hills, you're probably familiar with that anyway. Next. Okay, so here is the recommended action. I'll try, I'll read carefully here. Recommend approval of the comprehensive plan to the BCC for the revision set forth, amending goals, policies, text, and figures to the village separator, the effect on existing development approvals, figures PH 5 to 8, revisions to village I borders, and, and this is important, this is where we make a decision, including accepting the recommendation, the Core Reserve revisions, and there are actually four things, four items that you have a choice on. The first one is from the VOPH Property Owners Group, POG, that's represented by Pat Gasway, who will speak a little bit later. To reduce the wetlands buffer, it was from 100 feet down to 25 feet. The second came from the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee. They actually went one step further and said, listen, let's not put a number on it, let's just make it completely the same as the rest of the county, and we'll just make it match Land Development Code 803, 805.5. So they just said, we don't need the actual number, we're just going to make it completely consistent with everybody else's has to do and the rest of the county. And then the third option is to go with what the Parks and Natural Resources Department recommends, and Melissa Charbonneau will actually talk a little about that and be able to answer the technical questions related to the Core Reserve. And then finally, there may be a fourth option, as you discuss what you think is the most appropriate recommendation to make before the BCC. Next. So here we have again, Core Reserve, Village Separators, Effect on Development Approvals, and Village I Border, and that's the order we're going to go. We'll tackle the Core Reserve first. Next, first important is the comprehensive plan consistency, and there are policies that are, that are basically support the recommendation to revise the Core Reserve and the village separators, etc. So one is the comprehensive environmental protection strategy to identify and map an overlay for protection of the Core Reserves that is consistent with what we're doing. We're just defining now a closer definition of what the actual buffer will be. The second is policy flew 6.2 natural resource protection. That's where field surveys will help identify the linkages to locally significant habitats. Again, this is, let me read this because it's important. Core reserves may be expanded or shrunk, okay, depending upon the accurate up-to-date date, and you'll see a map in a few seconds that was about 10 years old, so we are requiring, if anyone wants to shrink or expand those core reserves, they will have to give us evidence that where it's been moved. Landowners need to be able to calculate the size and boundaries of the Core Reserve and their land, so that precise definitions are needed. A clarification was needed for the village separator requirements, and we solved that one. Village separators are still in place, except along the perimeter of the VOPH area plan, since they were intended to separate villages. It was unclear what the text was saying, and we wanted to make sure it was very clear. It was to separate the villages, it was not to create an area around the entire borders. Okay, and we'll get into that later. And then, policy flew 62.1 Conservation Framework, the highest concentration of environmentally sensitive land is located within regionally significant environmental features such as the Core Reserve. Ecological buffer zones protect these lands, they extend outward from this core and are regulated by state and federal rules, which is important. The intensity of human use shall increase incrementally with the distance from these regional systems. Next. Okay, so what we're all talking about now is Core Reserve's locational criteria. The Core Reserve overlay, I'll show you in the next slide, it shall be specifically defined by the existence of Category 1 wetlands. So that's the starting point, okay? Within these areas, in combination of the following parameters and resources, to the extent that such resources are adjacent to defined Category 1 wetlands. Here's the map, and you can see the dark green, that's the Category 1 wetlands, and the question becomes, should the Core Reserve be 25 feet? Should it just match the Land Development Code? Should it be, go back to what it was originally, which was 50 feet, depending upon whether other things were in the area? Or should there be what you prefer? Next. So I'm going to show you the text changes. So, this is the PO, the Property Owners Group proposal. In blue is what they struck out and what they wrote in. And I'll read you what it would be like in a clean version, because it may be easier to understand, hearing it more than just looking at this. Contiguous native upland habitats, which includes all land use land cover codes from the Southwest Florida Water Management District Land Use Classification System and the 300 400, and with the exception of 4400, the tree plantation section, within 100 feet of the Category 1 wetland limits. They suggested that you strike out the floodplain because it's covered in other areas. They suggest you strike out Category 2 and 3 wetlands that are contiguous to the included floodplain upland, and they basically said, a 25-foot buffer shall be established landward of the wetland line of the category wetland if there are no existing contiguous native upland habitats. So what that means, the very minimum, the POG is saying, give us at least a 25-foot border, and by the way, if there are other things, we can extend that up to 100 feet. So that's the Property Owners Group, and Pat Gasway will be speaking more in detail about that, a few slides from now. Then we came to the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee, and they looked at everything and they said, you know, we agree with almost everything, everything that you said except one thing, don't put the 25 feet in there, just make it consistent with Land Development Code 805.5. And that way, everything is the same in VOPH as it would be across the county. The other items on here, 1, 3, 4, 5, and 6 were similar to what the POG wanted. Okay, so that's, I can go to the next one. Go to that.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question while we're there? So what does 805.5 say as far as?
I don't have the whole text in front of me, I actually should have probably pulled it. Is it possible Denise, you can clear that? Hang on, she'll get to read it exactly the way it is. Sorry. I think the 25 feet's in there, but the issue became, if the number changes, then you got to go back and change it again everywhere else in the documents.
I assume that was the case, but I just want to verify what the current number is. Thank you.
Thanks Denise.
805.5 talks about upland buffers, and it says a minimum? A minimum of 25-foot upland buffer is required around post-development Category 1 wetlands unless the applicant has an unexpired Southwest Florida Water Management District FDIP or RB Corps of Engineer permit and/or a county site development plan issued prior to January 26, 2007. These upland buffers are integral to maintaining wetland structure and function and are necessary to protect the natural wetland ecosystem from significant adverse impacts. There's more information that talks about the different activities that can occur within the Category 1 wetlands, but that's basically what it says for Category 1. Then for Category 2 and 3, it says that upland buffers and allowed prohibited uses within said upland buffer shall be as required by the Southwest Florida Water Management District or other regulatory agencies with jurisdiction.
So the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee said, don't put a number on it, just match the code. If later on, you change it from 25 to 50, or change it from 25 to 10, it's an automatic change, rather than have to go hunt through the document and change other numbers. Okay, next. Thank you Denise. Here's the text, the actual text that shows you where we put in, if you look in the middle of the paragraph, which says, "Set forth in the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 805.5." Next. I'm just showing you where we made those changes. And there were two places, the same thing, the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 805. Okay, so that's VOPH Planning and Policy Committee Recommendation. Next, we have Parks and Natural Resources Response, and I'm just going to read that, and Melissa's going to, and a few seconds later from now, she's actually going to explain all this more technical, because she's the technical person there for that. The Parks and Natural Resources Response to POG proposed revisions. The Parks Natural Resources recommends that the original comprehensive plan text, which included the 100-year floodplain, Category 1 and 2 wetlands, contiguous floodplains and uplands, and the 50-foot buffer, okay, for the Core Reserve. They didn't want to see that touched. And then they added additional text, which says naturally vegetated uplands may include disturbed areas that can be restored to a state that can offer equivalent functions as provided by natural wildlife habitats as determined by the county administrator or designee. Areas that may be excluded from this designation are areas cleared through bona fide agricultural activities and not as preparation for development that cannot reasonably be restored to natural wildlife habitats as determined by the county administrator or designee. So they actually went one step further, just to clarify specifically what is really going to be counted as that. So here's the question, the question that you need to discuss and think about is, what do you want that buffer to be? Now, I'm going to show you Keith Wiley, unfortunately couldn't make it, but Melissa, who is on WebEx, can go over, she's got some slides that she would like to show, and walk you through, just explain the importance of this. And then I'll come back and we'll go to the next steps.
Go ahead, Melissa, you're on.
Has anybody been able to pull up my presentation? Because I'm unable to share.
It's coming.
Okay, great. Alright. Melissa Charbonneau, Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources. And I'm here today to speak to you regarding the Core Reserves. Our recommendation? Hold on, I lost. Our recommendation is to go with Option C, and I will discuss some of the changes that staff made to the comprehensive plan language. The objective of the flu is to protect regionally significant resources of the Core Reserve, and those include the ridge, Lake Pasadena, Kersey Lake, Buddy Lake, and other significant clusters of wetland and upland habitats. And to protect these things that are unique within the Villages of Pasadena Hills. These things were identified in the previous approved. These things were identified in the previous approval of this comprehensive plan, certain policy, to protect the neat features of what makes the villages of Pasadena Hills special, a special planned area. We stack added language to the floodplain section so that it will not increase or decrease as the flood maps are updated and the currently approved figure would be the same perpetuity. We also included language. That Ernie went over that clarifies the naturally vegetated uplands and what it should include. It would exclude the areas of bona fide agricultural activities. Um, let's see, next slide please. And this is where I discussed the change to the 100-year floodplain, which would be illustrated in figure three. It would not be changed as maps are updated. Next slide please. And this is what Ernie discussed again with the naturally vegetated uplands, and the exclusions would be that bona fide agricultural activities, and then any naturally occurring vegetation that can be restored would be included in the core reserve. Next slide please. We also added language to clarify when the boundaries would be reviewed of the core reserve. So this is a large area, VOPH is 20,000 acres, and I believe the core reserves are about 800 acres. And so field verification of these areas is very important because things do change. And it's more appropriate to do those reviews at preliminary plan or at zoning review. Next slide please. And so we did change some of the allowable uses within the core reserve. Allowable uses include public and private parks, trails, wetland mitigation, and road as required when there's no other feasible solution. So we also included floodplain and stormwater management systems to be allowable within, an allowable use within the core reserve. But we would like these outside the native vegetated areas. Next slide please. Nope, that's it. All right. So it's our recommendation to keep the current language and the intent of the comprehensive plan policies that were originally approved that protect these unique features of Pasco County and the villages of Pasadena Hills.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you. These revisions, by the way, are in attachments to the agenda memo. Second, I'd like to read a statement from Nick Tarius Pitos. He's the director, planning and, planning director, and he unfortunately could not be here because he was double booked. But he asked me to read the statement. The Planning and Development Department supports the Parks and Natural Resources Response because of, one, the unique character and design of Pasadena Hills. Two, the number of entitlements granted at the first approval of VOPH in exchange for creating a core reserve. Three, the recent reduction of the width of the village separators in exchange for the additional new land uses during the discussions over the core reserve and the village separators during phase one and phase two. We've actually been speaking about the core reserve for a number of months, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So there you have in the slides, I maybe can go back to my slides. It's going to, so you can see it, it's easier to probably see that there is really four, four choices you have, you can make today. And then Pat Gasaway will speak. As soon as we get back, go back to, go to the next slide, next slide, next, next, stop. Nope, okay, right there, perfect, okay. So the four choices are accepting the Property Owners Group, and Pat will speak about that in about a second. Accepting the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee Recommendation, which again said, eliminate the 25 number, put it in, just match the code like everybody else has. Three, accepting the Parks and Natural Text Revisions, which Melissa just went more detail for you. And four, maybe perhaps you want to discuss and come up with something different. So I would suggest we take the time to really examine this, ask questions. Pat, would you like to speak now? Are you there, Pat? Yeah, you can put him on.
I'd be happy to speak, Ernie, if you'd like.
Great, yes, why don't you speak, Pat? Let's put Pat Gasaway's slide on there, slides. Thank you, and I'll just sit down and let him explain the Property Owners Group, the way, why they recommend what they recommend.
Thanks, Ernie, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name's Pat Gasaway with Hype Design, representing the Property Owners Group. Our address is 5904 Hampton Oaks Parkway, Tampa, Florida. And in the past several months, we've been engaged by the Property Owners Group to collaborate with the county in order to achieve one basic goal. And that is to arrive at a more level playing field within the villages of Pasadena Hills in order to make them more market-friendly and more competitive. I think this is a classic example of, of how Pasadena Hills has a different set of rules. And that different set of rules, one, originally adopted back in 2008, which this language is surviving from, from the original adoption, was very robust. And in the, in the time that followed the original adoption, a bunch of things happens. You, you all might be familiar with a little bit of a downturn that we had in 2009, and, and the recovery that has taken quite some time afterwards. Now recognizing the robust comeback outside of the villages of Pasadena Hills, the goal was to try and take a look at our rules, update them to the, to today's market, and make it more market-friendly. The, the couple of things that I would point out is, the currently adopted rules require preservation of upland habitat without bound, right? So it, you preserve in accordance with this, whatever is there. It might extend well inside your property, it might extend all the way off your property and onto someone else's. This practical matter makes it very difficult to, to plan with this type of verbiage in a regulatory document. The other thing that I would point out is, in, in trying to seek a, a compromise position, we wanted to try and, and arrive at some definable boundary that could be implementable. That was our goal in recommending 100 feet. Of course, when there isn't vegetation to save, we recommended the 25 feet, which is the current county standard. I, I think it's important for the commission to, to recognize that this level of protection is only available during the development process. So agricultural landowners can simply convert this upland habitat to improve their, their ongoing agricultural endeavors. There is nothing that prevents that in these words. So the, the notion that we have extraordinary protection measures of that particular type of habitat without preserving it prior to development means the, the idea that this preservation actually can survive until development activities happen is completely unknown. I think it's really important for us to recognize that these words don't exist outside Pasadena Hills. And consequently, in looking at leveling the playing field, it's, it's very different, and in fact problematic with regard to the practical planning issues that we've been encountering since the adoption in 2008. If, if the commission has any questions, we'd be happy to answer at this time.
Karen.
I am. Commissioner Cox, okay?
Yeah, Pat, so tell me. Tell me what the big difference between what you guys are proposing versus if we match it to the LDC.
What we had proposed would create, in areas where there is native upland habitat that extends adjacent to the class one wetlands, we're proposing a 100-foot preservation area of that habitat. Now, of course, if it doesn't exist, we drop down then to match the current code at 25 feet.
Versus just following the code, everything would just be 25 feet? I'm, I'm having trouble differentiating.
Yeah, okay, right, right now, your current code basically says we need to preserve a 25-foot upland buffer surrounding the class one wetlands. What we're suggesting is, in addition to that, where there is native upland habitat, we would go up to 100 feet of preservation of that upland habitat. So the 25 would expand to 100 feet if that vegetation existed.
So, so you're recommending that be more restrictive than the, the county's LDC is?
Considerably more, yes.
And, and Parks, and Parks recommendation too, is Parks recommendation is 50 in all cases, is that correct?
Actually, oh. But I, I think Melissa could probably answer that best.
Um, our recommendation is to go with the current comprehensive land language. And that protects any uplands that are adjacent to category one wetlands within certain kind of land use types. And 50-foot adjacent to any kind of like pasture land, that would be a 50-foot buffer. But it would include all the uplands that are adjacent to the regionally significant features that are called out in the, in the flu policy, which is the Lake Pasadena, Kersey Lake, Buddy Lake, and significant clusters of wetland and uplands. So when, basically, if you have a reduction of these areas, you're not meeting the policy because it's supposed to include the uplands that are surrounding these key features that were significant resources of the county to protect. So pretty much, you're going from 800 acres to maybe 100. So, and then, then the connectivity of all these wetland systems and uplands is blocked. So these systems will all become fractured systems throughout villages of Pasadena Hills.
Melissa, I apologize, I don't, can, can you explain that again? What, I, I just could not follow you, I apologize.
Okay, so you have the onsite category one wetlands within the villages of Pasadena Hills, and those were identified as the starting point of the core reserves. To build on the protection of these regionally significant research, features that were identified during the planning process for the comprehensive plan, any uplands that are adjacent to those wetlands would be protected. And then if there's category one or two wetlands adjacent to those areas, those would also be protected, and the floodplain that's adjacent to those wetlands. So what makes a core system, and when you start eliminating the things that are identified to protect, it fractures those core systems.
Is, is there a, is that on those neighboring uplands to that core reserve? Is that, is that, and I don't recall, 50 feet, is that 100 feet, or does it depend?
It, there, there is no, it's 50 feet when there is like pasture land, and it's already in a converted agricultural land use type. But if it's a native upland, it encompasses all of that native upland. So it, I don't know if you could pull up that map, that might be able to explain it a little bit more for you? That was in your presentation, Ernie.
So, why aren't you doing that? Melissa, do you have a estimate on how many acres that is going to affect? So you're talking about affecting 100 acres.
Total upland acres, I don't think it's on this map. But it's all of these orange areas that are adjacent to the category one wetlands. And of course, all of these areas would be looked at at the time of zoning application or site plan submittal. The intent of the policy was to protect these core reserve areas and not just wetland habitat, and not just the buffer, but any kind of significant native habitat that is left within VOPH along these core systems.
And is this, is this specific to category one, or does it include category two and three wetlands as well?
It's specific to category one, but if there is, say, the category one with native vegetation, and then a budding category two or three, it would include those as well. So it's only when it's directly adjacent to the core reserve, major wetland systems.
So this is where I'm getting a little confused too. So I'm looking at this map, and I see a lot of the native vegetative uplands. But they're, but they're not around Pasadena or Buddy or Kersey. They look like, so is that part of the ridge?
Yes, and within those areas, it's part of the ridge and, and.
I know, Melissa, we lost your sound, I don't know if you can still hear us, but.
I'd like, if we could, ask Mr. Gasaway to comment on Melissa's.
Right.
I, I'd be, I'd be happy to. The, the notion that the cascading effect of preserving 50 feet of, of pasture or limitless amounts of upland vegetation because of their proximity to class one wetlands is the inherent problem. I mean, the, the idea that the, the property owners are going to have their lands confiscated without compensation with, with an unending limitation with regard to how far away from these category one wetlands this vegetation extends, it, it certainly creates very large areas that will be preserved. Unfortunately, that has a rather damaging effect to, to the landowners. And, and quite frankly, puts extraordinary burdens on the, the landowners and future developers in Pasadena Hills, completely violating the idea that we make this more market-friendly and more competitive with the remainder of the county.
Well. Well, and I have to say that I agree with that statement. You know, I was on the BCC when we, this whole idea, concept came about, and the whole ideas for this area of the county to be planned as a unit as opposed to being hodgepodge like most of the other rest of the county. So, I mean, I, I think what the Property Owners Group is asking for is, is fine, in my opinion.
Well, and I'll, I'll go on and tell you that I struggle with this. I mean, I live out there. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a part of the Property Owner Group, but I'm a property owner, and I live on Buddy Lake. And the struggle I have is that I understand the concept of wanting to be like the rest of everybody else, but, but the intent was that this place would be a little bit different. It's got some unique characteristics. And I'm not saying I sit here and know what the exact answer is. But I am saying that I'm concerned that as these changes come in, I kind of see it chipping away at the uniqueness of this plan. And I'm concerned that it's just going to wind up being like everywhere else in the county, and I don't want it to wind up that way. So again, I sit here, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not sure I agree with Pat. And I'm not sure I agree with Melissa, I'm just not, like I said, I'm not sure what the answer is. But I'm concerned, you know, again, I, I live on Buddy Lake. I, I want those areas to be preserved as much as possible. But I also understand, if you all have known me for a long time, I'm, I'm for property rights, and, and someday, my kids will probably sell my property and, and put houses on it, right? So, so I, I understand that as well.
So what are our four choices? Can you bring that one chart up again, please?
So, yeah, get the slide, it has four options. I think it's the next one here. You can accept Property Owners Group Recommendation, with the originally recommended. You can accept the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee Recommendation, which just struck the 25 and said, just match it to the code. You can accept the Parks and Natural Resources, which wants the original text, but it's enhanced with a few, few important things. Or you can all come together and have a discussion and, and agree. What would you like to go before the board? What would you like to go before the board?
Before we, before we get to that, I saw somewhere that one of those, originally anyway, was tied to village separation distances.
Yeah, I can go over the village separators now.
Well, my, my only thing is, is part of that was, at one time anyway, tied to the village separator, so?
So, go back, yeah, go back like two slides, I think. One more, one more, I'm sorry. Go back, one more. This is here, if you look at item number 2, I'll read it out loud so you can see. Strategies for protection of the core reserve in the absence of native upland habitats includes category 1 wetlands buffer of 25 feet, which the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee would like to make consistent with the rest of the county under LDC Section 805.5. Note, this was originally 100 feet, remember the original text I showed you, which was mutually agreed to by the POG and the PDD in exchange for reducing the village separators from the 300-foot, 150 feet on each side, down to 150 feet one side only. So what had happened is, as we were discussing the village separator issues, we agreed to clarify and actually reduce it, originally it was a 300 on both sides, now it's 150 on one side. And, and that was part of the discussions that we had to say, yeah, we can, we can clarify this, we can actually make it only on one side. When we discussed these things, we were sort of discussing a lot of things together, and the planning department feels like, wait a minute, guys, we reduced the, the village separators, now you're asking us to go one step further and, and really, really reduce the core reserve as well. But I think the issue with the cores, they're also is trying to define where that border should be, which is hard, because it's depending on environmental issues. So you see, it's not such an easy answer to, to answer, because I think landowners have a right to understand how much land they have that's developable, and it's hard to do that, and they're going to go out and get their, they're going to have to ultimately go out and, and define the core reserve, and we have to help that by putting in something that clearly defines it. So it's not such an easy thing to resolve, I'll just say that. But that's what that point was.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, if the, if the commission would, would allow me just one moment. On, on item number 2, Ernie, I, I have to completely disagree with you. The, the village separators were never 300 feet, ever, ever, ever. The village separators have always been 150 feet. So, the, the notion that we've gone from 300 down to 150, and so then therefore there should be some worst trading done with regard to the amount of preservation of upland habitat adjacent to category 1 wetlands is not the case. And I think it's wildly important that we make clear that statement. That the notion that the language adopted in 2008 was, was absolutely part and parcel to the discussions of how we went from an unplanned area to a cohesively planned area for 22,000 acres. We've witnessed what those rules do to the development potential and the market acceptance of this area. We've, we've had nothing happen in this 22,000-acre area that wasn't already permitted before the adoption. And I think it's probably wise, at this moment, to step back, look at that, and say, what's, what's the thing that we should do going forward?
So, Mr. Williams, I want to, can I be clear? Nowwithstanding what Ernie wrote into, I don't think that the village separator issue is directly tied to the core reserve issue. I think you can take action on the core reserve issue independent of what happens on the village separator issue.
Okay. So, two things to that. Number one, I want to hear if county staff concurs with Mr. Gasway's comment, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. And then secondly, I mean, I push back on Mr. Gasway's comment a little bit, because you're right, nothing's happening out there, but I, I wouldn't go so far as saying it's all because it's an uneven playing field. I would tend to, to say that a lot of it's due to the fact that we had a recession. Pasadena Hills is in the, more in the northeast portion of the county, and was less accessible. I mean, certainly, maybe some uneven playing field may play into it, but I wouldn't go so far as that's the only reason that's, nothing's happened there.
Hi, this is Peter Hansel, I'm just going to make some comments. I have a tendency to go ahead and accept the property owners group motion, or, that's the one I'm looking at the most. I can understand how some people may feel about seeing a beautiful acre, beautiful, I'm sorry, beautiful property on that part of the county, turn it into basically homes and streets and that type of thing as we move down the road. I remember looking at that booklet, I thought the company had done, or the, the planning organization had done an exceptional job in planning that community. I grew up in an area that was much like Pasadena Hills, and I go there every now and then, and it's nothing but homes and concrete. The last community or the last state I lived in, which was Kentucky, I had a horse farm behind me in addition to being tobacco. When I go back now to visit my son that lives there in Lexington, it's now homes and streets. Progress is going to occur. People will move to Pasco County, they will need homes. This is a beautiful area, from what I see, and therefore, that's why I tend to support it. So that's my comments.
Chris Poole, you got anything, you have anything?
No, I just said, I'd like Mr. Gasway to restate their proposal again for the owner groups, just so we can be clear, we talked about a lot of different things, but if we could, if he could restate that, sir?
Yes.
Is, is Pat still on with us?
Mr. Gasway, are you still there? So I guess, I mean, as well as?
I think this proposal is what is the PowerPoint right now, which is basically the 100 feet around category 1 wetlands, and then, if, if there is habitat, if there's not habitat, then it's 25 feet. I think that's the sum of what the property owners group was recommending.
And what was the, I'm sorry. And what was the VOPH committee proposal again?
Just strike, strike the 25 and put matching land development code.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, the VOPH committee was not recommending the 100 feet, even if there was, even if there was habitat.
Gotcha.
As a planning commissioner, it'd be, it'd be hard for us to go against what the owner group is, is recommending, and I would agree with Mr. Hansel and Mr. Cox.
Yeah, you know, it's a little bit more, it's more restrictive, and that's what the property owners group feels is appropriate. I think it, it beneficial to the area. So with that, I would move that we accept the property owners group recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Hansel. Did we ask for, or is there, is there anybody else present to speak on this item?
We don't have anyone else signed up to speak, nor at the kiosk, nor any emails or letters.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Michael Cox?
Aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
I'll vote aye.
Chairman Girardi?
Aye.
Okay, then I could continue and just go over the village separators and the others, just to let you know, these are the other points that we've all agreed to. Are you okay with that, or?
Yeah, it's good.
Go back to my?
Ernie, to be clear, they need to take action on the other three as well, even though they're supremely?
Yeah, they, we'll go back to the very first.
Take action on this.
Right, we're going to go back to the very first action item, once I go through the others.
And when you, when you say all agreed to, that means property owners, VOPH committee?
Oh, yes, yeah, all stakeholders, yes, all stakeholders, we've groups who've signed off on that, yeah. Okay, so, could you blow that up a bit more? Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Okay, keep going, keep, okay. Go back one, I think. Okay, so village separator clarification, there was confusion. And let me, let me read, excuse me, let me just read what it says. Your village separators may include wetlands, floodplain, and stormwater management systems, sidewalks, golf cart paths, which are really alternative transportation facilities, that's what we're calling them these days, all the other things with golf carts and things, neighborhood parks, recreational facilities, and other like uses, but no, no non-recreational structures. The 150-foot village separator buffer is only required in one of the two adjacent villages for a total of 150 feet, not the 300, that's where the 300 feet came in. It's 150 feet, but, yeah, it was going to be, it's being now clarified to go into one of, of the adjacent villages. Village separator buffers are not required in the village where non-residential development is adjacent to a primary or intermediate road separating two villages, or where the core reserve or wetlands are separating two villages. Okay, so you've already got some things that create a distinction between villages already in place. Village separators are not required in the boundary of a village if the boundary is not, is not adjacent to another village, but is instead adjacent to the VOPH boundary. So if your property is on the perimeter of VOPH, you will not have to put 150-foot village separator there. Okay? There was a lot of confusion in the last few years interpreting what this meant, and we're trying to make it really simple now. Instead is adjacent to VOPH boundary, excluded properties, rural enclaves, or countryside area. Any other requests to deviate from the buffer locations shown in figures, figure PH, a village separator, or rural enclave buffer shall be presented to the Planning and Policy Committee for a recommendation and decided by the Board of Supervisors at a notice public hearing. What it says basically is, here's, we're trying to clarify it, but you guys, property owners, if you have any really issue with this, you can go before the committee again and discuss the reasons why you, you can't do the 150 feet. So, question to Chris?
I have one concern for that. I don't have a problem with it, but I just have one concern. So, and I don't know if there's any examples of this or not.
Yes.
But you got two property owners with the village separator between them.
They're in two distinct villages. You've already got them, then 150 would do it.
Right, but my concern is?
Who comes first?
You got two people.
Fighting.
And so, what's to keep the first guy from coming in and saying, oh, the village separator's going on the last guy?
I, I think what will happen, most likely, again, I can't speak for the current planning, Brad's not on here, is he? I think what'll, most likely, it'll be at least 75-75, so it's fair. I think that's what they're going to push.
I agree, but I just wanted, what is the mechanism in place to make sure that happens?
Yeah, because when they come with the plans, we hit them with all these rules, and they'll say, we'll see that. Okay, I'll talk to Brad as well to make sure that that's the case. Brad, are you there?
I, I am, actually, I was just, just upgraded to speak.
Good, speak.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Two, two things on this, this whole, whole system is that we're looking at, at little individual pieces right now. When this was originally approved, and I think Commissioner Cox can recall, it was approved package of pieces, and it's very difficult to look at each one individually and, and understand the impacts that it has on the others. That was, that goes along with, partly with what was, we were talking about before, but it may also apply to this. But in terms of, Mr. Williams, exactly, exactly what he said is my main concern on this. The first person in can assign this buffer to the other village, technically, based on the way they do the plans, unless it's specifically said in here that they cannot do that. And I'm not sure how we can avoid that, other than to put something in here. And that, you know, that may be, that may be a 75-75, unless otherwise agreed upon, kind of language. But it very much could be first come, first served, the way it's written.
And Brad, I, I know, there's a lot, there would be a lot of different situations, but that would be my concern. I mean, because, you know, there could be all different things in that gap that would, you know, a wetland, or, or, or a very, a variety of things that would create that 150 buffer, but my, my concern is that somebody comes in, and there's nothing in between, and the first guy says, oh, the 150 is going to be on the other guy. And nobody, it just happens that way. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate.
I'm sorry?
And, and there are some, there are some potential issues with it even being 75-75, you know, perhaps there's 150 feet of wetland on, on one side of the village, in one village, and the other guy's got all the upland, you know, in which case, it would make sense to actually shift that over. But, you know, again, it, it's, it's an individual, we're making a global policy here that's got to encompass any number of potential individual situations, so it's going to be difficult. So as long as there is, is a method to look at each situation independently, if those arise, much like we have our alternative standard type of situation, that may be the way to address some of those concerns.
Okay, and did Pat want to speak?
Hey, Ernie, this is Pat, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, we are enjoying some technical difficulties here, I'm not actually Christie Barrero, she has much more impressive hair. When it comes to the, the idea of village separators, I, I can tell you, we've, we've entitled, you know, thousands of units thus far since the adoption in 2008. And those have been implemented thus far, but the process of having neighborhood meetings and preparation of village master plans for each zoning that comes through the process puts in the light of day the intentions of the developers, and allows the surrounding community and all of the surrounding property owners to weigh in on the location, the size, and the uses within those buffers. So, I, I think there's ample opportunity in this process that, that is different than the rest of the processes in the county to accommodate the, the concerns of one individual placing a buffer in a location that's inappropriate to the adjacent property owner.
And if I could just add to what Pat said, every one of these projects comes to the Planning and Policy Committee and Planning Commission through the MPUD process, so if Planning Commission or the Policy Committee thought that there was, we were not treating somebody fairly with these buffers, they would have an opportunity to weigh in at the time of the MPUD approval.
Okay. Thanks, David.
You guys okay?
I would also note that there's a, there's a sentence at the bottom that talks about you can deviate from these buffer locations by presenting that to the Planning, Planning and Policy Committee. And I believe we changed that, Ernie, to say, deviate from the buffer locations or the widths, didn't we?
Yeah, I think, I have to check, yeah. I'll make sure it's in there, deviate locations.
I'm just saying, you need to make sure your text reflects what it actually says.
I tried summarizing, so it may be in there, yeah. Okay. The key is widths, make sure the widths are in there, okay, I'll make sure I do that. Next slide is just basically shows the new map, showing the 150-foot village separator between villages, because that's, was an issue last time, the maps didn't really clear, clear that up. Oh wait, hang on, go back, just back for a second. Okay, keep going, it's fine, okay. And then here are the examples of some of the things that you can put in that village separator, and I can't really read it from here, but it's in your, your, your package. Okay, next? Okay. Third item is the applicability and effect on existing development approvals. I'm just going to read this, because there are existing development approvals, and now we're making some changes, and it's important that we don't punish or make, make the applicant have to pay more money, basically, as we made these changes. So the VOPH Comprehensive Plan Amendments to Chapter 2 shall apply both prospectively and retroactively to the existing MPUDs already approved in VOPH on May 5, 2020. The Board of County Commissioners delegated authority to the County Commissioner or his designee to administratively amend any and all existing VOPH MPUDs in order to conform to these amendments without the necessity of an MPUD amendment application or application fee after notice to the affected VOPH MPUD owner. Such? I'm sorry, such administrative amendments may occur at the time of the first preliminary site plan, preliminary development plan approval for the applicable VOPH MPUD under review. So this above proposed text allows pre-approved MPUDs to be modified to the, for example, the Connected City Master Roadway Standards, because that is what VOPH has incorporated as well, et cetera, a bunch of things, without having to pay any additional development review fees or process and captured before the first preliminary site plan, preliminary development approval. Okay, we don't want to punish her, because they, you know, we came in later and decided we were going to change some things on them. Okay, that's that item.
Ernie, Ernie, before you go on, make your PowerPoint on this too, because we also changed that first sentence to say, except for excluded properties.
Yeah, that's, I think it's, yeah, that I think is in that text anyway.
I'm just saying, before you get to the board on this, you need to make sure you, you're using the current?
Okay.
Language for these things.
Right, got it. Thanks, David. Thanks, David. Exactly, okay. Okay, and here you can see, here's figures that have been changed. Now, we're talking about village, I'm sorry, I'm switching gears on you, we're moving on to expanding the borders and internal border of Village I, that came recently in the last two, three weeks, and what we've done is, as part of the comp plan amendment, we've incorporated into it, yesterday, the VOPH Planning and Policy Committee agreed to this, they said it's gonna be part of the, it can be part of the comprehensive plan amendment, they, it was like 6-0, basically saying, yes, we can extend the borders, the internal borders of Village I. The countryside is purple, the yellow at the bottom is Village I, and you can see there's a slight sliver, go to the next slide, and you can see clearly there are five parcels. You see the five parcels that are fronting King Highway, right, or King Road, Fort King Road. There are three owners, one is the county, and there are two other owners. I have spoken, or and emailed, both of those other two owners, and they have no problems with this. And I have also notified and spoken with and emailed Todd Vanderburg from Sephar Hills as well, so there, so there are no issues related to this as well. Let's go to the benefits and why we're doing this, so, next slide. The area Village I has increased by 39.7 acres by relocating its boundary eastward. Countryside area had then decreases by 39.7 acres. Residential density transition is still in place, what, within the remaining land in the countryside. The rural enclave buffer on the edge of countryside has not changed. There is no change in the number of residential units or non-residential square feet in Village I, and this is important, because if there were changes in entitlements, the financial plan would be affected, this has no effect on the financial plan. Entitlements are the same in Village I, they're just distributed a little bit slightly differently. Village I currently has no entitlements at this time. However, a maximal level of 4,038 residential units type 2A and 240,000 square feet will still remain in effect, no change. When fully developed, Village I will have the same number of units as before, except to have a lower gross density because of the additional land area that you've, that you've added to Village I. Because the number of entitlements have not changed, there's no impacts to the financial plan. Affected landlords will have an additional opportunity to construct more units, however, the total amount of residential units in the entire Village I will be the same. And so we amended the maps that show the Village I borders. Next. The benefits is that Village I is located in the southern part of VOPH, close to Sephar Hills, east of Fort King Road, in the vicinity of Village I, there are already established neighborhoods, the future land use is residential six. This development pattern is very different than the development pattern further north on Fort King Road. What's happened is that development has occurred, densities have been up higher than before, they needed to look at this a little bit. Basically, the 40 acres of land proposed to be added to Village I has a future land use of Res 1, much less dense than the future land use directly across the street. If these parcels were to be added to Village I, which is what we're proposing, they would most likely develop as a residential edge with a minimum of two units per acre, and still require the 50-foot buffer at the edge of the village for the VOPH comp plan. Therefore, the density of this additional property would only increase slightly. There will be no change to full build-out of VOPH entitlements, so the gross density remains unchanged, and the financial plan remains unchanged as well. By extending the area Village I south of the future Overpass Road, approximately 630 feet to the east, Village I will now have an opportunity to directly access Fort King Road, which basically increases the safety traffic and all that stuff. You've got another access points. It will also create a more cohesive development pattern, it'll become part of a village, instead of being stuck between a village and a road with, has a much higher potential density across the street. I think there's some, another one more slide on this, I can talk about, the final, okay, so here we are, we're at now the final recommendation for the comp plan amendment. I'm gonna just read the first paragraph, because this is what we will say. Recommend approval of the comp plan amendment, CPAL 20-08, to the Board of County Commissioners for the revisions set forth in A, the comp plan amendment, CPAL 20-008, amending goals, policies, texts, and figures to the village separator, existing development approvals, and figures PH5, PH6, PH7, and PH8, revisions to Village I borders. And, including, accepting the recommendation to the Core Reserve revisions from I, the VOPH Property Owners Group to reduce the wetland buffer from 100 feet to 25 feet. So all the changes, from my understanding, what we just discussed 15 minutes ago, right? We all agreed to go with what the POG proposed revisions were, right? And that's item number one.
To be clear, though, it's not always a reduction from 100 feet to 25 feet, it's all, it is 100 feet in some locations.
Yes, yes, depending on habitats, right.
They've already taken action, they already did a vote to accept number one, so I think they just needed to vote on their remaining three items.
I'm sorry, David, say it again?
They already voted for number one on your list there.
Yes, you voted for number one already, you made that agreement, right?
So they just need to take action on the other three items.
Okay. So then go back to that last, the last slide we just had, oops, one up, right there, the first paragraph, if you're, if you're okay with that, because number one has been accepted, you need to make a motion about that, other items.
Yeah, so we need to vote on the remaining three items, not including the wetland buffer item.
That's correct.
The village separators.
There's the village separators, there's the borders, and what's the third one, Ernie?
The effect on existing development approvals.
Approuvals, alright. Do you have questions?
I'll make a motion.
Actually, just read the first paragraph, you'll be okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the village separators as stated, the adjustment to Village I as stated, and also the, I'm sorry, I can't even remember the wording of the other one.
The applicability. Effect on existing development approvals. Effect, yeah, applicability on existing development approvals. The MPUDs were approved earlier, right?
That's my motion.
Okay.
I'll second, Chris Poole.
Okay, Chris Williams made the motion, Chris Poole seconded, is there any further discussion from up here? I guess, do we need to ask, or is there anybody else here, present at the public kiosk, or on WebEx to speak?
No one at the public kiosk, no one on WebEx, and no letter or emails.
Excellent. All right, no other further comment, roll call vote?
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Girardi.
Aye. All right, now we'll blaze on to PC 5.
Okay. Actually, there's a, my second item here, I'll be real quick, it's just the-
I'm sorry.
This stewardship ordinance from the Land Development Code that implements what you just agreed to recommend. Okay, it's basically, there's a lot of clarifications that had to be added to code incorporating these changes in the comp plan that we've just suggested. Can I whip through and let me read the ordinance? If it's okay, please. An ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 602, J. Ben Harold, Villages of Pasadena Hills, Stewardship District, revisions to text, table, and exhibits 602-C and 602-D to Chapter 602, J. Ben Harold, Villages of Pasadena Hills, Stewardship District, including the Utility Master Plan and the Utility Development Fees, and addition of the 2020 VOPH Master Utility Plan, and as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability, repealer, severability, inclusion into the Land Development Code, and an effective date. Wow, a lot of words there. Okay, phase two-
Ernie, can I stop you? Ernie, Ernie, can I stop you? Actually, this ordinance has nothing to do with what you just approved.
Sorry?
It's unrelated, it's about adopting a master utility plan and surcharges for Pasadena Hills, so, it's unrelated to what you just approved.
Again, go back to the first, can I see the ordinance title, second Denise, again? Okay, you're, there were some new exhibits, there was a mobility fee exhibit, I think thrown there as well at the time, that was new, that got put in there. Yeah, it's predominantly, yes, it's, okay, yes, what David described, yes, phase two is all about utility master plan and the surcharge credits, and we're gonna explain that in a few minutes here, that are new, and implementing this plan, okay? So yes, it's, think of phase two, in this ordinance is predominantly that, okay? Yes, okay. Okay, so a quick summary of the revisions. You have utility master plan with a proposed, utility master plan with proposed new utility surcharges. So there are Table 14 Water Development Fees, these are new, Table 15 Waste Water Development Fees, and appropriately explanatory texts related to the financial impacts, okay? Just as a note, there's no change in the base utility fees, and they are not going to be credited, and Pasco Utilities, basically, the county utilities department can basically charge the fees as they always do and spend them whenever, wherever they want. The only new fees are the surcharges, and only those are credible, so we're gonna go into that next. Okay, so a quick summary, financial plan works, just as a reminder, the VOPH financial plan works even if 80% of what we've entitled gets built, okay? So there's a cushion in that. The base utility impact fees generated by VOPH continue to be spent by PCU, okay, Public Works, for county-wide service needs and not just for VOPH. And no credits can be utilized against the PCU base utility fees. PCU will continue to use its base utility connection fees to provide the treatment plant and other system-wide improvements necessary to provide utility capacity for VOPH. This is really vital to understand this, because the utilities department made it very clear, that don't touch the base, these are new fees, and you can do what you want with those. No portion of the county's, but of course, let me go back, the surcharges and all that has to be spent within the borders of VOPH, because it's a special district. No portion of the county's base utility connection fees can be allocated to the VOPH master utility transmission lines, those are the surcharges that are related to that. 100% funds needed for the transmission mains are raised by the new additional fees called surcharges, which private developers pay, everyone in VOPH are now paying an additional surcharge, and these are the only credits that will be available, in terms of the utilities, okay? Just remember, only focus on utility issues here. Private developers must carry the cost for the trunk lines and await repayment through the use of their own fee credits for their project or assignment, and use of those credits by other future projects pursuant to the VOPH fee credit registries. What's new about VOPH in this element is we're charging new fees, surcharges, everyone pays those surcharges, it goes into a list in a fee credit registry. Whoever comes in first and builds the transmission lines, there's a process that has to be undergo, verification of the cost, they did it right, the capacity's correct, let's say it costs 10 million, it's Mr. Joe, Joe, whatever, Simone or something, he put his name up on the top, he registers that on the fee registry, okay? Now, he's already pulled out 10 million dollars, because he's built transmission lines that just don't only feed his development, but everybody down before him. Let's say he's two miles from where you can normally tap in. This is, this is the layman's understanding, which is what I'm trying to explain to you, but Pat will explain this more in detail, as we get into this. Okay, so that, so what happens then is then, how does he get his 10 million dollars back? I'm just gonna example this, how does he get it back? Well, the next person that comes in has to pay surcharges, right? The first thing he's gotta do, let's say this guy, the second guy's surcharges are a million dollars, okay? Instead of paying the surcharges now, he buys those credits from the first developer, and that covers that. So the first developer gets paid back, and the surcharge is recredited, and that, and it keeps going down the line until everybody basically pays for all the, for all the infrastructure that goes in the, in the system, basically. That's, that's the layman's view, okay, of what we're doing. Let me keep going, and then we'll get into more of the details of this. Okay, so, VOPH utility budget estimates and the utility surcharge amount is subject to periodic review by the county, which makes sense, because costs go up, right? Actual build-out, construction costs, and system requirements will require regular updates and adjustments to the financial plan. Next. The recommended action here, and then this, I put this in because utilities made it very, Mike Carvalho made it very, very clear, he wanted to make sure we all understood this, and let me just read it to you. Recommend approval of the VOPH financial plan revisions that include a 100% of all utility-based development utility impact fees be consistent with current county processes that allow funds to stay within Pasco County Utility Department as needed to meet service demands throughout the county, I verbally explained that earlier. And B, credits will only be issued for the new proposed utility surcharges, and these surcharges can only be spent to meet service demands in VOPH. Makes it very, very clear, this is what he wants us all to understand. And also, to recommend that the Property Owners Group work with the county to create a utility surcharge fee system that includes additional fees that cover all county administration costs for handing, for handling any surcharge fees and credits in the credit fee registry before the final approval by the BCC. The final approval is January 26, and we are in process right now, working through the system of how the fee credit registry will work. There is additional fees that are being charged, administrative fees, review and administrative fees of $400, it was $200 before this plan, okay, and now it's been upped, and that, out of that, 200, out of the 400 will pay for the reviews that have to happen in current planning, the other 200 is administrative, which will cover the cost of managing the fee credit registry system. So we're in the process of ironing out the details, I've actually met with a bunch of people and departments, because there's a lot of people involved in this, I've gotten a lot of input from people. It's not finalized yet, it looks pretty much that we're gonna farm out the whole thing to consultants, that's the way it's headed right now. The Utilities Department actually prefers that we do, you know, they didn't wanna just own it, in a sense, in a sense, they wanna do what they're doing and what they're good at, and they felt the credit registry is something over and above they normally would do, and they would prefer, either it goes in the planning department's hands, or it goes into a consultant, and it really makes more sense to have engineers look at this, because they've gotta reevaluate costs, make sure things are fair, make sure capacities are correct, and things like that. It's more than just credits, it's verification, and things like that. And we have an entire process charts that have been created, that I've been showing people to say, this is how it could potentially work. Anyway, the point of making this is, this is, we're doing this now, and this is what Mike wanted us to make sure that we were doing this. Okay, next. So, go back to the stewardship ordinance, one of the purposes was consistency among documents, to ensure what was agreed upon in the utility master plan is added to the LDC stewardship ordinance, it called for additional definitions. You have all this in your, in your packet, basically, under all the changes in the LDC that's being proposed, I'm just summarizing it, credits for surcharges, Utilities Department's abilities, base fees, fee registry, next. Then there was updating, update based on, again, VOPH utility surcharge allocation tables, mobility fee tables put in there, West Water Development Fees, Waste Water, I'm sorry, Water Development Fees, and the new, the revised POG credits, so there's been a series of tables that have to be added to the Land Development Code as well. Next. There are no changes proposed for existing zoning, future land use, and the number of entitlements, residential density and commercial intensity of entitlements, this is important with this, there are no changes, any of that stuff going on there. Proposed Land Development Code text and exhibits implement the revisions to the financial plan, the master roadway plan, and the comp plan amendment for the 2020 updates. Pat, I'm gonna have you explain more details, if you, again, because again, this is your baby, we reviewed it, we, we're, we're okay with it, we think we can pull it together, but here, if you guys got questions, I think we should, Pat should be here to answer those.
Great, Ernie, again, Pat Gasway with Height Design, representing the Property Owners Group, you know, we've, we've been the author of the, of the financial plan since its initial adoption, and its multiple changes over time. I think, Ernie's summary is, although it can seem confusing, that the notion is that the current level of utility fees that are charged by the Pasco County Utilities Department will continue. We're simply adding the obligation of paying surcharges such that will create lending necessary to implement the master plan that Pasco County has arrived at for the Villages of Pasadena Hills. Those surcharges are the only portion of that development fee that is creditable when a developer invests in infrastructure on behalf of the county. And we've gone through the same type of calculations that we did for the remainder of those fees that were previously adopted in the financial plan, and we're happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission might have on the implementation of those surcharges or the calculations therefore. Happy to, happy to be available for any questions you might have.
Can I ask a question, Pat?
Sure.
I don't think either Ernie or yourself said the amount of the surcharge. What did you?
I'm sorry, it's, we can't share that, will you? Ernie, if you would, perhaps, share my, my presentation, or at least go to the financial plan slides in the back. Great, Denise, if you could, you could scroll on down, this is ground that we've already plowed. So, let's see. Oh, there you go. See, one or two more up. Oh, yeah, so keep, one, what, one more slide, one more slide. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, this is kind of the punchline, when it comes to the transportation surcharge, the previously adopted, $15 higher, if you guys recall, there's been a change- guys recall, there's been a change in the, in the amount of mobility fees that are charged for multifamily. That is very minor effect on the financial plan here. There's been no changes to the school or the parkland surcharges. We here have added a water transmission line surcharge of $1,928 per single-family detached unit. We've also added a wastewater transmission line surcharge of $593 per single-family detached unit. And, and there's been no change since the adoption in May of that administrative fee where we, we increased it from 200 to 400. When you add all of these surcharges together, you're at $3,477.14 per single-family dwelling unit in the villages of Pasadena Hills. Those surcharges are above and beyond the otherwise suburban mobility and impact fees that are required.
So, Pat, if you could just, I think one more line would be helpful on this slide, which is how that surcharge compares to where we were at the beginning of Phase 1. Because I still think it's ultimately a reduction from where we started, isn't it?
It is, it is. Let's see. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't have that number right in front, but I think it's about, we were originally about $6,500 per surcharge.
Okay, yeah, I'm not suggesting you need the exact number now, just when you go to the board, if you could add one more line.
Got it.
That talks about how that surcharge compared to where we were at the beginning of all this.
Okay, great. Happy to.
Thank you.
And I guess, Ernie or Mr. Gasway, just, maybe I should know this answer, but without this approval, what happens now? Is there no surcharge?
What happens now? Yeah, what, what happens now is when it, when a developer needs to make an expansion of the county's current facilities, they have to build those pieces of infrastructure and then donate them to the county. And in addition to that, they have to pay the normal water and wastewater utility fees, which at this point are about $3,900 per single-family detached unit. Sometimes the, the county will authorize a, an upsizing agreement where if the developer builds a line with greater capacity than that which is necessary for just the service of their proposal, then they would be reimbursed by the Utilities Department.
Okay, so this in essence just basically creates a bank for there to be credits issued for them to recover some of their money.
That's exactly right. It creates the foundation for the ability of a developer to invest in the county's infrastructure and get paid back over time by others that come after them.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from up here?
Thanks, Pat. Yeah, we'll go back to the slides. Quickly make a, yeah, thank you. Okay. It's the one on the, okay, keep, yeah, next one after this one? Okay, we did, okay, as, I don't know if Mike Carvalho or is here, Rob Marin is here. I don't think they are. No, okay. I just, I had asked that they wanted to be here to be present to give you their own opinion, but I guess they trust me. Anyway, here's the recommended action from the LPA. "Advocate approval of the Phase 2 Revised Text Table and Exhibits to LDC Section 602 VOPH Stewardship Ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners, including the revised 2020 VOPH Financial Plan with Utility Master Plan and Utility Department Recommendations." That's.
I guess we need to ask, is there anybody here to, anybody else here to speak on this item?
There is no one else here to speak on this item, and there is no one at the kiosk to speak on the item, no emails or no letters.
Okay, need a motion?
I'll make the motion that we adopt the recommendations for the LPA.
Second?
I'll second. Chris Poole.
A motion by Peter and a second by Chris Poole. No further discussion. Roll call vote.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Girardi.
Aye. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Denise, item P5 or item 7?
Let me get to the. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. The following item is PDD 21-2087. This is a variance request in the name of Sashin Shaw and Sarmela Shrestha. And it is, the parcel is located in south-central Pasco County on the east side of Rain Tree Road, approximately 1,350 feet south of Rainbow Lane. The request is for a reduction in the required minimum front setback from 50 feet to 30 feet in an AR1 agricultural residential district. In front of you is the site plan with the variance showing a 30-foot front setback and the impact into the wetland. Here's the site plan without the variance showing a 50-foot front setback and greater impact into the wetland. This is the wetland delineation survey that shows approximately .33 acres of upland area and 1.03 acres of wetland area. The parcel consists of an undeveloped lot in the Meadowbrook Estate subdivision, which consists of the north 270 feet of Lot 14. The subject parcel contains category 3 wetlands. According to the wetland line determination, as I stated previously, .33 upland acres and 1.03 wetland acres. The applicant has submitted an application to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection has requested that the applicants revise the location of the single-family dwelling and pool, moving the location to the west in order to utilize feasible uplands located on the property. They will require, of course, a environmental resource permit from the FDIP. And there, the staff recommendation is approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet. I did submit to the, the Planning Commission nine letters of objection, and the subject property is the wetland property that is shown on the east side of Rain Tree, and the stars show the letters of objection that were received with respect to the location of the property. So there's objection to the north, objection to the south, to the east, to the southeast, a few hundred feet to the southwest, 1,400 or so feet, feet to the northeast, and about 1,800 feet to the northeast as well. And then there's a letter of objection also that comes off of this map, which is almost a mile southeast of the request. Here for any questions, the applicant is available, and we do have folks at the public comment kiosk to speak on the matter.
Okay, thank you, Denise. Is the applicant present, or do you wish to hold, hold off until you hear from those in opposition?
Mr. Shaw, would you like to speak now, or would you like to wait?
Hi, Denise, and Planning Commission. Good afternoon, thank you. Yeah, I can wait. Whatever is good for you guys, I can wait. Sorry, I have my six-year-old with me, and there's a background noise. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Can you go and stay there? I'll come back.
Okay. So, I guess, anyone else who is present to speak at the public kiosk?
So, we'll take comment from the public comment kiosk, please.
Hello, my name is Chris Haas. Address is 17311 Rain Tree Road, Loues, Florida 33558. I'm here to speak on PDD 21-2087.
Mr. Haas, have you been sworn in, please? Have you been sworn in?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My property is adjacent to this lot to the east. I not only represent my property, but also neighbors and surrounding as well. We have some others here today that would like to speak. As you've heard, you've received a lot of objection emails, so all of those that were notified in the neighborhood have objected. We also, through the surrounding neighborhood, have passed around a petition of objection to any development on this lot, where we currently have 36 signatures. About another 10 to 12 residents that object, but we were not able to catch them at home for a signature. I have copies of the emails, and, which I know you already have copies of, but also the petition I'd like to submit to you as well. A couple of points on the objections, and which are in the emails. In the application for this variance in Section 3C, it states that the comment, or the applicant is asked to comment on the statement. "The alleged hardship was not created by any person presently having an interest in the property or was created as a result of a bona fide error." The response in this application states that the hardship was not created by anyone having a result, or having an interest in the property. It was recently purchased, a single-family home, and it was discovered that wetlands were on site. The statement is clearly misleading. I personally spoke to the landowner 10 days after he closed on the purchase of this property to let him know it's mostly wetlands. There are a lot of problems that you will see with building on this lot, setback, wetland mitigation, well-inseptic, all of these issues. He assured me at that time that he had already done his due diligence. He already knew everything that was going to be required. So to imply in this statement that it was discovered, like, lies up and purchase, misleading. There's also a statement in Section 3D saying that it will not affect the public or community, and will actually be beneficial with the setback to reduce the mitigation impact. Now, granted, reducing the mitigation impact would be beneficial, however, any impact in this area would be detrimental to the neighbors and the community. This community was flooded in the late 70s, and as the neighborhood, or the area has grown up around it, all of those areas that have been built up have drained their rainwater runoff into this neighborhood. We already have significant flooding concerns, we already are underwater whenever we have just normal summer rains. Any reduction to the capacity of this wetland will impact everyone else around the neighborhood. Another issue, and I know that this would be the Department of Health, however, the proposed location of the drain field in this site plan is well-insight, the 75 feet apartment of the apartment.
Your time is up, sir. You all get 40 minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haas. I think your time is up, is what Denise is saying.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to receive and file the petitions such that he presented.
Okay.
They all moved such.
Second, Chris Poole.
Okay, all in favor? Roll call vote.
Michael Cox.
Aye.
Peter Hansel.
Aye.
Christopher Poole.
Aye.
Chris Williams.
Aye.
Chairman Girardi.
Aye. All right, next.
The following person at the kiosk, please.
Denise, can we get somebody to get what was received and filed so we can get it to the court?
Yes, I'll do that.
Okay. If you can, state your name and address and state whether you have been sworn.
Yes, I have been sworn in. My name is Charles Hoffman. I reside at 17340 Riverstone Drive, Loues, Florida. In response to PDD 21-2087, we are objecting to this variance for multiple reasons. I'm going to add on to what Chris Haas just said. The current conservation area, which is basically what it is, it maintains a lot of the runoff from the area. It was already designated a wetlands area 25 years ago and was told to people looking to purchase it, it was unbuildable at this time. All of a sudden now, we can build on it if we remove the wetlands, I guess. So, I've also had contact with Swift Mud, John Pawanda. I've also talked with George out of Pasco County Engineering. They have also evaluated that the pipe drains that property across Rain Tree up to Meadowbrook is also overcapacity, so any building on that lot is already going to affect that drainage system. We're down to, everybody in that neighborhood has one acre to build on. You're looking at a piece of property that has .33 buildable area in it, and you're going to affect the wetlands and cause a lot of problems. With that being said, everybody involved in this purchase was made aware of the wetlands and that it was a non-buildable lot. This is no secret. I've been in this area 50 years, and we know that it's not a buildable lot. To ask for this variance is, is a waste, a waste of everybody's time, and it's going to be detrimental to the entire neighborhood. A drive-by by anybody that has any ecology sense is going to understand that you cannot put a house on that property without affecting the wetlands, the drainage, and all of the affecting neighbors. And like Chris Haas said, we already have a drainage issue that I have actually been working with the Sierra Pines Coalition with, and we still don't have a resolve on what needs to be fixed. So, we very much oppose this variance, and I hope that you look closely at the impact that this is going to have on the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If you would just please state your name and address for the record and whether you've been sworn.
I've been sworn. My name is Teresa Muzio, and I live at 17301 Rain Tree Road, and I'm here in regard to the petition, VA 2087. I sent you an email as well as the other people. We want to make sure those emails are part of the record here. We are in opposition of this. I will tell you that I am on the south side of that property, and when I look at the plan and I show retention pond and piping that is piping the water uphill, because my water flows from my back into this wetland, and now you want to pipe that water upward into my property and flood out my driveway, and that is totally unacceptable. 20 years ago, when I bought my property, I was told by Pasco County, because I am Lot 14, the Lot 14 was split in half, I live on the front half, the back half is wetlands. And I was told it was non-billable. So I have a real problem with this, and I really want to make sure that everybody understands the impact it's going to have on me as a homeowner that has lived on this property for 20 years and paid property taxes and have a problem with water already on the road, in the ditches, and on the backside of my property. So why would you allow someone to build there and impact all the neighbors that are already having a water problem in a negative manner? And what really surprises me is why in the world anyone would think it would be okay to pump water uphill off of somebody's property into my property? It's totally unacceptable. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else at the public comment kiosk?
Those are the last speakers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak at this time?
Mr. Shaw, if you would just please provide your name and address for the record and whether you've been sworn. Mr. Shaw, are you there?
Hi, this is CJ Green. Mr. Shaw's environmental consultant. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, Mr. Green, would you provide your name and address for the record and if you've been sworn?
I was, I was earlier when you, when I raised my hand in the beginning.
Okay, yeah, just your name and address, CJ, please.
My name is CJ Green with Merriman Environmental. Address is 10408 Bloomingdale Avenue, Riverview, Florida 33578.
And you said you have been sworn, correct?
Yeah, earlier when there was a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I know there's a lot of opposition with the residents, but they're not actually looking at what the variance is for. they're not actually looking at what the variance is for. The variance is to reduce wetland impacts. The variance isn't to build, it's to reduce impact. I don't understand why people are opposed to reducing wetland impacts. He's bent over backwards and gone through so much to try to get this property built, and he will be one of the only properties in the area that actually has their own stormwater system. There's no water getting pumped. It's an engineered stormwater system, so that's going to take care of all the flooding. As for the wetland impacts, there are going to be wetland mitigation credits, box four. Wetland impacts will be offset. There will be no flood impacts and floodplain impacts have been. So by anybody opposing the variance is really a proponent of more wetland impacts. I just want to say that the variance needs to go through to reduce wetland impacts. That's the bottom line. We want to reduce. We don't want more wetland impacts. That's really, all I need to say is, we want to reduce them. If the variance does not go through, that's more wetland impacts that are going to happen. So that's what I appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you, CJ.
Hey, CJ, thank you. Sorry, this is Mr. Shaw. I don't know, I got dropped from the WebEx, I'm back.
Mr. Shaw, please provide your full name and your address for the record and if you've been sworn, please.
First name's Archim, last name's Shaw, seventeen-two-nine-five Rain Tree Road, Lutz, thirty-three-five-five-eight.
And were you sworn in?
I'm on the WebEx, so I guess you have to sort me in?
Yes, please. The clerk will do that in a second.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Shaw, will you raise your hand, and do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shaw, you have five minutes.
So I don't know what CJ explained. As you can tell, I'm not a technical guy. I'm the owner of the land. I don't know a lot how this works. I just wanted to say, I was there when Chris made a comment and my other neighbor. I just wanted to let you guys know, when I purchased this land, it was marked as a buildable land. I purchased through the Realtor, and I was told it is a buildable land. That is true. And when Chris called me, I guess he was saying, ten days ago, I think that is true. And he did say that I have to go through multiple processes, this and that. I was actually frustrated at the time when we talked, because I had a multiple call, people interested in buying this land, and I was probably talking too much with the people. But he did mention, I'm your neighbor, I'm from the community, and we had a good talk for fifteen minutes. And he put his interest on buying this land, and I told him, this land was on sale for so long. I have six-year-old, that is a great area. I wanted to build a family. It is a great school zone, and that is the reason I love nature. And that's the reason I wanted to buy, and I like that area. So that is there. Again, Mr. Chris reached out to me, I believe, back in May, and he put in interest on buying the land again. I mean, I think he was asking, I had the text message, and he was asking me, what is going on with the property and if I had any plans, if I want to sell it, something like that. So that is true. My other neighbor, I don't know, like I said, at the time, I had many calls, and I believe there was another folks from the community, they wanted to buy the land. And my, I mean, again, I don't know. Like I said, I am individual buyer, and actually, I learned a lot on the drainage issue and all this through this email coming in, and this neighbor putting up together, and I really do feel for them. I do. And I learned a lot about the area. I learned a lot about this wetland throughout this process. Now, as CJ is environmental from the Merriman, I did talk to county at the time, I believe, when I was, before I talked to Chris. And I talked, I asked them, what is this wetland, how it works, and I was told it is category three, isolated wetland, if I recall. And so I can go through the process, but I had to work with the DEP, environmental folks, and go through the process. That is what I am doing. Even this variance request is per DEP request, so that we can minimize the wetland. My whole goal, I made a lot of consideration in my project, as CJ might have said, I don't know if he did or not, but we made a lot of change on the site plan. I reduced my size, we moved things around so that we can minimize the wetland impact. So trust me, I'm doing everything on my end so that we don't impact the wetland. But again, I'm taking a lead from CJ, Merriman, they are scientists, they are professional on this. I'm working with the county, I'm a DEP, and you guys. So, I mean, in nutshell, like I said, I'm individual, I bought the land to build my family. I love the area, it's a great area. I was not fully aware of the whole thing. Now, on the retrospect, if I knew I had to go through all these hoops and, I mean, all this process, probably, I would not have chosen it, trust me. And so, so that is there. I just wanted to say, thank you to you all, thank you to my neighbors, thank you for your comments. I would appreciate if you guys approve it. May God bless you, and I will take your decision, whatever you make. So thank you all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shaw. And I guess, just for clarity, I know CJ outlined this, but for those in attendance, I mean, the question being asked today is a variance to reduce the setback. We're not here to say whether you can or can't build the house. This is a front setback reduction variance that's being applied for, so in essence, that would reduce the impacts to the wetland in the back of the lot. I guess Denise, being a single-family lot, or I guess, is there anybody here that can answer this? What is the process with the county? I mean, obviously, a building permit, but is there any other permitting?
Yeah, so I believe we have both Will Poon and Melissa Charbonneau from Natural Resources, Will Poon from Planning and Development, who can talk about maybe some stormwater engineering, and Melissa Charbonneau, who can also talk about wetlands, she's with Natural Resources. So they're here to answer those type of questions, if you'd like. They will have to submit a drainage plan and, you know, and things like that, but, you know, my subject matter experts can definitely articulate that in a better way than I can.
Yeah, I guess, Will, can you explain or confirm what they'd be required to submit?
Sure, this is Will, Will Poon, senior engineer in current planning. Can you do me a favor and pull back up your slide where it had the exhibit with the wetlands survey on there, if you could, please? Okay, so I assume everyone can kind of see that survey. If you notice the delineation of the wetlands, and then there's also a flood zone designation also of AE. It's actually flood zone AE fifty-five-point-nine is the base flood elevation. And also, typically, in situations like this, and probably Melissa can probably speak more to, but, you know, in wetlands areas and flood zone floodplain areas, it's common that both lines or delineations kind of similar, because that's a depressional area where floodwaters and so forth will pond. And so based on FEMA, the flood zone for this particular lot, if you notice, is pretty close, if not almost the same, as the wetland line, as you see delineated there, which encompasses, I would say, seventy-five percent of the lot. So imagine floodwaters will rise to that elevation right there where you're pointing during a base flood elevation of fifty-five-point-nine and under your storm event. So there is significant impacts if you propose to build a home that may require fill or a structure, driveway, septic tank improvements, anything of that nature that impacts the flood zone floodplain area. It requires the applicant to address our Land Development Code, Section nine-oh-two-point-two-G-five, which is upwind encroachment. And per that code, you have to provide equivalent compensatory storage volume for the impacts you have. So in essence, whatever you fill or impact that flood zone floodplain area, you have to make it up somewhere else on your property. So therefore, even if you could impact any part of it, you still got to make up that same volume somewhere else on your property, more than likely, it has to be in the remainder of the upland areas to make up for the difference. So there's going to be a lot of physical challenges to this parcel, from what I could tell, and even if attempting to submit for building permit that requires a drainage plan that addresses those concerns that I just mentioned about floodplain encroachment and the grading of the proposed improvements, and also, I believe, the septic tank out here in this area. So obviously, it will also require a Department of Health septic tank permit. And my understanding is, and of course, it is the responsibility of the Department of Health, but typically, septic tank needs to be at least seventy-five-foot separation from any surface water. So, you know, wetlands is considered a surface water area, so there's going to be some challenges, I think, here also, keeping that seventy-five-foot minimum and so forth from the wetlands itself. So those are the things that, part of the building permit application that we would expect to see when it's submitted to the county for review, those things there that I just mentioned. And also, one other thing, it is hydrologically connected. If you look at the Pasco mapper aerials, there is a hydraulic connection that goes north. If you notice on the survey, there is a drainage easement, and so if you go north, it actually connects to a bigger area of wetlands also. So there is a hydraulic connection between this wetland on this particular parcel and the adjacent wetlands north of these lots along Main Tree Road. So, anyway, thank for the questions, let me know. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can, that's a question I had. One of the residents mentioned a conservation area. Is there any official conservation easement in this area that's recorded?
So there isn't a conservation easement recorded on the plat, if that's the question? There isn't a platted conservation easement recorded.
And the clarification on the resident's question or comment about there being a conservation area?
I think, I'm only assuming that what's being said is that the wetland area is the conservation area.
Okay.
So wetland and conservation, those terms are used, you know, interchangeably.
Yeah, but there is no formal easement that's recorded on that?
No, not a formal easement recorded.
Okay, and did you say Melissa's there as well?
Melissa's on as well.
I guess, Melissa, just my question, does the county, in this case, would they defer to DEP for the wetland impacts, or is there additional permitting or approvals or mitigation on the county's behalf that this homeowner or property owner would have to do?
They have to provide, since it is category three wetland, they have to provide documentation from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection that authorizes that impact, and they have to show that they are mitigating for that impact, if that's what the department decides needs to be done.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be either onsite or through, like, a mitigation impact?
Merriman Environmental purchased bank credits, or that's what was recommended?
Mr. Chair, can I ask Melissa a question?
Sure.
Melissa, is there any required upland buffer to a category-three wetland?
Not on single-family homes, according to the state regulations. They can go right up to the wetland line. There is no required setback for wetlands.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions from up here?
I have a question for the engineer, Mr. Green.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Mr. Green, are you requesting any variances from any of the floodplain regulations or wetland regulations that were described by Mr. Poon or Ms. Charbonneau?
No, no, we're planning on using a mitigation, we're going to have to buy mitigation credits for the site.
Do you intend to fully comply with the floodplain regulations that Mr. Poon mentioned?
Correct, correct, yeah, we have to, that's why it's, there's actually going to be a stormwater pond on a single-family home, which is kind of unheard of, to be honest. I mean, you don't see too many engineered stormwater ponds in single-family homes, so, so, yeah, all the floodplain impacts are going to be addressed. We are unfortunately having to redevelop active plans, the engineer passed away, so now we're having to redevelop something. So there are going to be new plans coming out with, you know, all the comments and the redesign of, you know, if the variance is granted with the house being pushed forward, which will reduce the overall impacts to the floodplain, too. It's not just going to reduce wetland impacts, it will reduce the floodplain impacts, as he said, it's basically the same line.
So basically, to sum it up, the only variance you need for this site is the septic occurrence. You don't need any other variances?
Correct, correct, and it's not dependent on the variance. Honestly, I mean, the DEP still will, you know, permit the site with the proper mitigation, which is what we're going through. So, so, yeah, yeah, it's all, it's all being done properly.
David, may I add something to that, please?
Sure.
Okay, so I want to clarify, that's not necessarily true. Just because you minimize the impact of the wetland, doesn't mean that takes away from the volume that's required for flood zone floodplain. Keep in mind, the floodplain is based on the elevation of fifty-five-point-nine and existing grade. So if the existing grade is at, you know, less than that anywhere up to that point on your property, just because you minimize the wetland impact, doesn't mean that you minimize the volume that's required. That expectation still needs to be provided onsite, and it's based from the seasonal high water up to grade. So you got to really keep in mind, you say you create a pond, just because it's a pond doesn't mean that you have enough volume. It's based from the seasonal high water up to the grade, so therefore, that volume is based on that, not just the pond that you may construct. So therefore, I really seriously, you relook at what you're engineering, because it may not be as much volume that you'd be able to compensate onsite as you think due to the other improvements that you have onsite. So it's a cut-for-cut compensatory storage volume requirement. And right now, what I see, you're very limited in uplands, and you have your septic tank, I saw from your original design, which I'm worried about meeting seventy-five-feet separation from the wetlands. So there's a lot of challenges, but obviously, those things you just got to be aware of. And I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, this is Brad Tippin. Can I speak for a second?
Yes, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Will, that's absolutely right. This is absolutely going to be a challenging site to develop, and I think that that's why the applicant has actually gone the distance of hiring a stormwater specialty engineer to deal with that. But to answer David's question specifically, is, there is, we won't know if there are any other alternative standards or anything of that nature that might need to come to fruition until we actually get the engineering on the site to look at. However, as far as we know, there are no more variances that would be required. This is the only variance. And my understanding is that if this variance is not approved, the home could still be constructed, it would just have more of an impact on the actual wetland itself.
Well, I guess, Brad, given your point, and my concern is that, I think the biggest concern is the drainage, more so than the front setback, and if they seek an alternative standard in the future for drainage, will that come back to the Planning Commission?
I think it's an alternative, this is Will, I think it's an alternative standard that it can be done administratively, I believe, but I would not support it, just to let you know upfront.
Well, okay, I mean, it's up to the Planning Commission, but you could approve this variance with a condition that any alternative standards related to drainage come back to the Planning Commission for approval, but that's really up to the Planning Commission.
Okay. So under the conditions of approvals, it's all required permits, does that include mitigation requirements? I mean, the ERP permit, obviously, building permits, what, could you clarify that? I mean, the ERP permit, obviously, building permits, what, could you clarify that, what all required permits are? Or could we expand that, like David said, to say all required permits?
Yeah, yeah. Let me be clear. They need to get the permits, building permits, they need to submit drainage plans. There are various permits that need to be issued.
Right.
I think what Will and Brad are saying is if they try to get a deviation from our code on floodplain or drainage, that can be approved administratively by staff, in which case, the citizens wouldn't necessarily have an opportunity to make comment on that.
Okay, understood.
Unless you impose a condition on this variance that says that of any other variances related to floodplain or drainage come back to the Planning Commission for approval.
Okay. Denise, I don't know if this is applicable or not, but, I mean, anybody else on Rain Tree, do they all meet the 50-foot setback requirement?
Okay, so I can answer that question. So, two lots down from this particular parcel, north of this parcel, there is a house that the front setback for the actual structure itself does meet the 50-foot setback, but then there's actually a porch that projects, which the Land Development Code does allow a projection of a porch up to four feet. So it's approximately 46-point-something feet or 47 feet from the front property line. Additionally, Ms. Muzio, who spoke on the record earlier, does also have a Carolina carport type of a structure, so it's a metal structure where she parks her recreational vehicle. That is at 30 feet and less in some areas, without a variance.
Does that count as like an accessory structure, or?
It still has to meet the front setback. All accessories have to meet front setbacks.
Any other questions up here, or if not, on to motion?
This is Michael Cox. I'll move for approval.
All right. Motion for approval, Commissioner Cox, any...
I'll second it. Peter Hansel.
Peter Hansel, second. I guess, just before we vote again, once again, and obviously, this is just an approval for the variance of the setback reduction. I mean, this is an approval for them to build. They can build no matter what. I mean, it's just, this reduces the amount of mitigation and the amount of floodplain compensation that they have to account for in their design. So, just want to make sure that's clear. There's a motion for approval in a second. No further discussion, do a roll call vote.
Michael Cox?
Yes, aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
Christopher Poole?
Aye.
Chris Williams?
I don't vote on this matter.
Chairman Girardi?
Aye.
So if I may, before we adjourn, if that's okay? All right, thank you. So, Planning Commission members, I do want to let you know that for Civic Clerk, which is the new system that we're using, the Civic Clerk team is going to be implementing a dashboard called the Board Dashboard or Committee Dashboard, which basically, you can access the actual record through this dashboard. Once that's implemented, which will be very soon, they're going to be sending a tutorial on how to use that. And then also, it has been brought to our attention, and we understand that some of the map attachments are not loading very well. That's a problem that we have to take care of within our, when we upload the attachments, we have to flatten them or optimize them, so that way, they're viewable in a better way. So we'll start doing that, and you'll, for the next public hearing, you'll see that all your attachments should, knock on wood, load perfectly with perfect ease.
Great.
That's all I had, sorry.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Chris Poole.
All right, motion in a second. I don't think we need a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.